At this time our car, a regular scheduled meeting of the York County School Board to order. It is seven P M. Good evening everyone and welcome. This evening we have our pledge leader from Bethel Manor Elementary School. His name is Memphis, Memphis Hudson if you can come up please. Memphis is a fifth grade student at Bethel Manor Elementary. He is a dedicated leader who is respected by his peers. He leads by example in academics and citizenship and he is on the A B honor roll and received the good citizenship award. Memphis currently serves as the S C A president for Bethel Manor Elementary and also maintains his busy extracurricular life through participation in course, the Good News Club and football. His teachers described him as zealous, as a thought thinker, who is dependable, well behaved and a great school citizen. That's all stands for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you sir, great job. We're going to move into our recognitions and awards this evening and our first set of awards are our seniors of the month and we'll start with Mrs. Haywood and Bruton High School.
Thank you, representing Bruton High School tonight is Ms. Shaquana Branch. And Shaquana will stand with parents Charles and Mornisia Branch. Is anybody else here with you? Sister Stan, what's sister's name? Olivia, okay. And let me share something with you about Shaquana. Shaquana has been a contributing student to the Y C S D School of the Arts Dance Program for all four years of high school. She's been active with the Spanish Honor Society and served as president during her junior year. She currently serves as vice president of the Health Occupations Student Association and is the historian of the Bruton High School National Honor Society. She demonstrates leadership with both organizations through the numerous service projects she has completed. Shaquana also spends a considerable amount of time supporting her community by volunteering as a tutor for elementary school students. She was chosen to receive the William and Mary Leadership Award in two thousand and fourteen and has recently been honored as the N W A C P A C so award winner and we'll talk more about that later as I talk about the program. Shaquana has served her school and community while maintaining a four point five zero G P A and received academic high honors during each year of high school. Her plans for the future include attending co- attending college to complete a degree in English. Hampton University, University of Virginia, Virginia Commonwealth University and the College of William and Mary are among the schools that Shaquana is considering. Please join me in extending congratulations to Shaquana to thank her for the contributions she has made to Bruton High School.
Senior of the month from Grafton High School is Helen Landers.
There she is. Are your parents Troy and Joy Landers here? Would you please stand? It is with great pleasure that Grafton High School has chosen Ms. Helen Landers as its senior of the month for January two thousand and fifteen. It has been a busy and rewarding four years at Grafton High School for Helen who has been inducted into the National Honor Society and who serves as the vice president of the Tri-M Music Honor Society this year. For the last two years she has led the award-winning Grafton Marching Band as drum major. She is also play- she also plays several instruments. First chair flute in the Grafton Win Ensemble, saxophone in the Grafton Jazz Ensemble and bassoon in the Grafton Symphonic Band. Her talents earned her all districts band recognition in two thousand and thirteen and fourteen. She was also selected to perform with the Virginia Tech Honor Band, first chair for the last two years, and the C N U Honor Band, first chair this year. Helen also shared her athletic talents with the Grafton J V Club Lacrosse Team where she served as team captain her junior year. In addition to her school activities Helen is a member of the five syndrome of Yorktown and has attended the summer residential governor's school for visual and performing arts. As active as she is Helen still finds time to volunteer with her church youth group at a local soup kitchen. Grafton High School is honored to recognize Helen Landers as its January senior of the month. She is an outstanding student and a talented musician who hopes to attend George Mason University in the fall. Please join me in congratulating Helen Landers.
Thank you Ms. Kerski, Dr. George you have that.
Yes, thank you. This evening we have our Tab Senior of the Month Kristen Gatling. Kristen you want to stand and I think your, your mom and dad Dave and... There we go. What's your wife's name? Robin, I'm sorry, I've only known him for nine years. Uh, her grandparents Bob and Lillian, stand up. And the other grandma Linda Rose and her Frenchy bird. There you go, I got everybody. All right, as the voice of Tab's daily announcements, our January student of the month, Kristen Gatling is one student who does it all. With a four point seven six one nine G P A and ranked number one in her class attending the select governor's school, she is an A P scholar with distinction, a member of four national honor societies and a four-year S C A representative. This year she is serving as student body president. The S C A at Tab is an active student-run program and Kristen's involvement often mirrors the C E O of a small business. She has been her class president for two years and leads our debate and forensics team. All this while involved in leadership positions in multiple clubs and president of our award-winning female musical ensemble. Her self being selected for all district course. Her resume and community involvement is just as impressive serving as a member of the York County Youth Commission, the Y M C A Leaders Board and the Board of the Hampton Roads Youth Volunteer Corps. Her volunteer hours exceed those of her contemporaries. Kristen is a natural ambassador for our school and a stellar representative of the best of York County. And is it okay to say that you were just accepted to University of Virginia? Congratulations, thank you, you make us very proud Kristen.
And now the pleasure of introducing our York High School Senior of the Month which is David Mollencamp if you can stand with your mom Christopher and Kim. York High School is pleased to announce David as our January Senior of the Month for York High School. He has been an important member for the Falcon family since his freshman year. He is actively involved in the Latin Club, Model United Nations, the National Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps, golf, indoor track and field and tennis. David was also a delegate for the American Legion and participated in Boise State. He is currently co-captain of the tennis team and a member of the Latin National Honor Society and an executive officer with the N J R O T C. David won the West Point Society of Williamsburg Leadership Award and the American Legion Scholastic Achievement Medal. David also participates in activities outside of school. He tutors students in various subjects. He is a Cuba dot org loan originator, the Williamsburg Women's Coral Logistics Coordinator and an American Independence Foundation of Colonial Virginia representative. Your plate is full, but we appreciate your contributions to York High School, congratulations. At this time Dr. Shandorn and I are going to go down front for the rest of our awards. Dr. George I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, at this time we're going to move into our student service awards. The first one this evening from Bethel Manor Elementary School Colin Engler and Mr. Lombardo. I'm going to come on up here. Bethel Manor Elementary School is proud to recommend our outstanding fifth grade student Colin Engler for the two thousand and fifteen student service award. Colin is an excellent school citizen who has made a profound impact within his school and community. Colin is currently a member of the school's safety patrol. Colin takes his work with the safety patrol very seriously as he greets students and staff with a smile and assists with an orderly and safe start to each school day. Colin was also instrumental in the planning and success of the fifth grade's oyster restoration project with the Waterman's Museum. Colin exhibited tremendous leadership throughout the project and his desire to make a difference was an inspiration. Colin has an uncanny maturity beyond his years. Teachers stated that he is like an architect, able to look beyond what is directly in front of him to see the true potential of what lies within. Then he begins crafting and bringing his vision to life through laughter, kindness and affirmation. Colin gravitates towards those in need. If a student needs extra encouragement, is alone at recess or had a difficult day, Colin is always there with kindness and support. One of Colin's classmates described him by sta- by saying Colin is an amazing person who has left a humongous, never seen that word spelled, humongous mark on our class. Colin is a responsible, caring and giving person who is an exemplary model of what we expect of a school citizen and is worthy of notice and appreciation. Colin you make us very proud, congratulations. Mr. Mencher I believe you have the next award.
Thank you Dr. George. It's a real privilege and honor to be able to introduce to you York River Academy's student service award winner Carter Rose and Principal Walt Cross. If y'all will come forward. Read a little bit about Carter. Carter Rose is a junior at York River Academy, has become one of our most outstanding students. He has a solid academic performance and seems to get stronger with each passing year. He contributes significantly to his class and can always be counted on to provide support, assistance and encouragement to his classmates. The best word to describe Carter is service in individual classes, in the school at large and in the greater community. Carter has become our go-to guy for so many things at York River Academy that contributes to the overall success and smooth functioning of the program. He does the recycling program at school weekly, collecting and taking care of materials and is in charge of the setting up for the monthly parent partnership meetings, collecting a group of students and then directing them to set up for then, for then and take down the room after the meetings. Carter is on the team that has gone out into the community to collect video and still photos to support website development. He is on the team that has developed the Step Up York Project. He has been the voice of the morning announcements at York River Academy this year. Carter is an integral part of our key club and all of the service projects they have undertaken. He is, he is a student assistant for the science department and gets barred from that job by other teachers to provide help and support. Carter has been for years a volunteer and a junior interpreter at Colonial Williamsburg and is active with his family in community projects and outreach. He is a young man who cares deeply for others and is motivated by a desire to not only serve others but to make things around him better. Carter has overcome significant hurdles and has worked hard. We at York River Academy benefit from his personality, work ethic, service and disposition. He makes us immensely proud and we commend Carter Rose to you as our student service award winner recipient. Please join me in congratulating.
This time we're going to move into our community volunteers of the month and Mrs. Haywood I believe you have our first volunteer.
I do indeed, thank you Dr. George. From Bethel Manor Elementary School is Heather Price. If she will come forward with Principal Ken Michael Lombardo. She's not here. Okay, let me share something with you about her if I may. Mrs. Heather Price has been an active parent volunteer at Bethel Elementary School for several years. Heather currently serves as the P T A president. She works as a volunteer has ma- and has made a profound impact on the Bethel Manor Elementary School community. Through Heather's leadership as the P T A president and as executive board member over the past two years, the P T A has continued to blossom as an integral part of the school community. Beyond her exemplary efforts as the P T A president, Heather's commitment to volunteering is inspiring. Mrs. Price coordinated the annual B M E S Spring Carnival, which is a much anticipated family event. Due to Heather's leadership, attention to detail and tireless effort, the school carnival was a tremendous success. Heather has also led our volunteer efforts related to school beautification days, Home Depot days, bingo for books and various fundraising endeavors. In addition to her leadership and coordination of events, Heather is always willing to roll up her sleeves to help the school. When the office was in need of new furniture, Heather and other, and another P T A member assembled and installed the new furniture during the summer. When the school's laminator was broken, Heather took it upon herself to coordinate its repair and speedy return. Whether serving on the P T A, coordinating school-wide events or volunteering in the classroom, Heather is always willing to help the students and staff at Bethel Manor Elementary School. Bethel Manor is fortunate to have such a dedicated volunteer and we truly appreciate, appreciate the school-wide volunteer efforts. And in her absence we want to congratulate her and when we see her, thank her.
Mrs. Kerski I believe you have our next award.
I do, I would like to invite the York River Academy Principal Walt Cross and Mrs. Bonnie Stevens to come forward. Mrs. Bonnie Stevens has been an active and important member of the Y R A school community since her military family came to York County in association with Langley Air Force Base. She has had an enormous impact on the school directly. A few things will be highlighted and we want to also talk about how she has indirectly helped Y R A through her roles as parent and mentor and through outreach to others. She has opened her home to other students and has driven countless miles in supporting healthy and productive out-of-school activities. She is a member of the Y R A governing board and you can always count on Bonnie Stevens to be honest, direct, innovative and caring in her comments and actions. Mrs. Stevens has been an asset to the key club. She has also been a driver for many of the events outside of school with her large band, especially the Christmas caroling at the nursing homes. She has given her time at the yard sale by helping to get materials, organize and price items and spent most of her Saturdays supervising the sale and the student volunteers. She prepared lunch for the student volunteers at the Coates' Walk-A-Thon for Project Eliminate as well as provided rides for students and brought many of the materials. Mrs. Stevens has helped provide gifts both years for the adoptive family project, most notably by helping to get stockings and gifts for each of the family members. She has been a great help in providing support and adult leadership at many of the key club events outside of school. Mrs. Stevens can often be seen in passing from one activity, event or schooling endeavor to another. She is active in her church providing support to the food pantry, singing on the praise team and leading Bible studies. She is active in support at Langley and has cooked more than one bag of cookies for events there. Mrs. Stevens is a blessing to many, her family, church, school and larger community. Strength and dignity are her closing and she smiles at the future. We are grateful for Mrs. Stevens for all she does and brings to the York River Academy and commend her to you as our volunteer of the year. Congratulations.
This time I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Kerski. She has a presentation from the York Foundation for Public Education.
Yes, I would like to invite Kermit and Denise Ashby of the York Foundation for Public Education to come to the stage along with Memphis Hudson, Colin Engler and Carter Rose. Doctor and Mrs. Ashby would like to congratulate Memphis Hudson, a fifth grader from Bethel Manor Elementary School for reciting the pledge of allegiance at tonight's school board meeting. We would also like to recognize tonight's student service award recipients. Colin Engler from Bethel Manor Elementary School and Carter Rose from York River Academy. Special gifts from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet are being presented on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education in partnership with donor Jeannie Fioke of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet. Congratulations and enjoy your cookies.
Okay, at this time we're going to take a short recess so we can come down and congratulate our award recipients. Thank you.
At this time we'll return our meeting to order. We always enjoy doing the first part of our meetings with the presentations of our awards and recognition. Do we have any unfinished business? With that, we're going to move into presentations to the board. Excellent Academics is our first one. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Mesfer. Dare Elementary School staff and students have been actively engaged in problem-based STEM education. Students in Miss Buckley's fifth grade class have taken on the role of scientists to investigate real-world problems impacting the oceans. Using an inquiry process and hands-on experiences, these orcas, or ocean research conservation agents, have explored and researched the impact of humans on the oceans and plan to share their findings with other Dare students in the community at an upcoming ocean symposium. Dare Elementary Principal, Ms. Lindsay Caca Valley will introduce our student and staff member presenters. Thank you.
Good evening Chairman Mesfer, school board members, Dr. Shandor, and members of our community. I'm Lindsay Caca Valley, principal at Dare Elementary, and I am excited to share with you some of the problem-based and transformative learning that's happening at Dare Elementary School. This past summer, Dare's fifth grade teacher, Deb Buckley, along with four other York County teachers, were selected to attend the Virginia Initiative for Science Teaching Achievement, VISTA, at William &amp; Mary. During this four-week summer institute, Miss Buckley engaged in in-depth professional learning that ultimately resulted in the creation of inquiry-based science units aligned with the Virginia SOL. This authentic approach to science instruction has our students interested, excited, and engaged to investigate environmental issues. Now I'm going to turn it over to Miss Buckley and her orcas so they can share more about the exciting things happening in their classroom.
Thank you, Mrs. Caca Valley, for that wonderful introduction. I'm Deb Buckley. I've been a fifth grade teacher at Dare Elementary for the past 14 years. I'm so honored to be here this evening to tell you about the STEM instruction that's going on in my classroom this year. This past summer, when I attended VISTA, I was able to collaborate and learn with other teachers from across Virginia. And during this time, I was reaffirmed in my belief that students learn best when it's hands-on instruction. One of the strategies that I learned was to make scenarios for the children. So in this next slide, you're going to be seeing, this is a letter that I created to kick off the oceans unit. It's from NOAA, a fictitious letter of course, but it engages the children. It asks them if they wanted to become orcas, which are ocean research conservation agents. Of course, they were all thrilled and they wanted to embark on this adventure to study the ocean, the geologic characteristics and physical characteristics, along with human impact problems. In order to engage the students in the scientific-based inquiry, I flipped the curriculum. So essentially, we started with a problem. Instead of just diving into the content, we started with a problem. How can we protect our oceans? While I'm teaching the curriculum, the ocean scientists, the orca scientists, they're also engaged in researching their own topics so that they can understand the problems, the causes of the problems, the effects, and possible solutions. The whole time that they are working and researching, they're using their best reading and writing researching skills so that they can become great communicators at our future ocean symposium, which we'd like to invite you to come to. I'm so excited and proud to introduce some of our orca scientists that are here this evening to tell you about some of their discoveries. We have Derek Crockett, Jalen Parker, and Emily Nicholas.
Hello, I'm Derek Crockett. I'm a fifth grade student and orca scientist. My research on oil spills have shown the problems that oil has caused to coastal communities. When oil reaches the shores, it interacts with sediments such as beach sand, gravel, plants, and habitats of wildlife and humans. Here I am investigating one type of oil cleanup method called a skimmer. It skims the oil off the surface and is carried as waste. It was very effective because after cleaning the oil, I was the one on my team with the least amount of oil left. All this absorbent works second best at cleaning up the oil. I would like to introduce Jalen Parker to talk about his research.
Hello, I am Jalen Parker, a fifth grade student and orca scientist. The cleanup method that I had did was to disperse it. It breaks up the oil after a spill. I first tested the pH of the water and it was a eight. Then I then added one millimeter of Dawn dish soap and I inserted it into the water. I was surprised to see that it had dead little to remove the oil. And when I had tested the pH after, it had gone to an eight point five, which is unhealthy for plants and animals. Overall, I do not think that it is environmentally safe. One alternative form of energy that is environmentally safe are wind turbines. Scientists and engineers are looking at the possibility of putting up wind turbines off the coast of Virginia Beach. That is a good place because there is more wind over the oceans to generate electricity. For the ocean symposium, Derek and I will be building a small wind turbine and testing it with different blades to see which produce more energy. Here is Emily to talk about another human impact on the ocean.
I'm Emily Nicholas and my research has been concerning this beautiful sea creature, the sea turtle. Sea turtles feed on jellyfish and over the last 10 years, our sea turtle population has declined due to the death of sea turtles that have been eating plastic bags that they think are jellyfish. We all use plastic bags and they are making their way into the ocean. My project involves informing people of this problem. Along with other orcas, I will be visiting classes to teach other students about the harmful effects of plastic bags getting into the ocean. One solution is to use cloth or paper bags. These are some examples of research and solutions that we have studied as orcas. We'd like to invite you to our ocean symposium on Thursday, February 26th, at our school from 4:30 to 5:30 PM to learn more about our ocean ecosystem and how we all can protect it. Thank you for your attention.
Students who would like to give you an invitation.
Thank you very much.
Well, I want to thank you very much. A great presentation once again. I know that Dare Elementary School for me is kind of close to my heart because that's where I went to elementary school just a few years ago, of course. But we didn't do this kind of fun stuff when I was there, but we learned. But y'all obviously are having some fantastic fun in the classrooms while you're learning. Now, I didn't know sea turtles eat jellyfish. I learned something new this evening and with the number of jellyfish in York River, we definitely need to increase the number of sea turtles out there. And as people get stung, they probably would like to see the same thing happen. But thank you, great presentation.
Anybody want to be a marine biologist or oceanographer?
Environmental scientist.
Anyone?
I, when I grow up, I would like to be an engineer.
As I was watching the three of you, I thought, wow, I see marine biologist, environmental scientist, something like that. Even though you're in fifth grade, you may not be thinking that far into the future, this may have had a dramatic impact on you that you may, you know, about 10 years say, wow, or less than 10 years.
I think they'll go to the beach and look at the water very differently.
And you can help educate others about pollution and polluting the beaches and the waters. Well done.
Exactly. Just want to take one minute and thank Miss Buckley for inspiring your students in those projects and thank you for all you do every day for our students.
Thank you and we hope to see the whole community to come out for the ocean symposium and if you can make it on the 26th of February, Thursday afternoon, that'd be wonderful. Thank you so much.
And one more introduction too, and that's Kim Haskins. Thanks for being here and being a part of the team too. You were over there queuing up the PowerPoint and Jager, but thank you for everything y'all do. Appreciate it. All right, our next presentation on Dr. Shandor is our construction report.
Yep, I'm going to ask Mr. Shearheart if he can step to the podium and provide a brief update on the construction report.
I'm surprised Mr. Shearheart hasn't requested to go at a different time in the agenda because he always has to follow the food and action on exhibit.
Next time he's going to come with a white hat and goggles.
That might be an interesting way to do it. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Shandor, I'd like to present the capital projects report for the month of January. I'd like to cover five projects this evening. The first of these is Dare Elementary School. This is a stream restoration and stormwater project I brought to you several months ago. I just wanted to give you an update on what's going on there. Again, this is a project that's being run by York County EDS, Environmental Development Services there. And this project is approximately 46% complete as of December 31st. They've made some progress since the 31st of December, but due to the weather and the rain and the cold, it has slowed down the, I feel like it's slowed down the construction somewhat. But the scheduled completion date is still the beginning of March. There will be some landscaping taking place until April 15th. Here's the stormwater retention pond. This is behind the, this is, I'm standing in the practice soccer field behind the gym at Dare and looking out over the property adjacent to Dare Elementary. This is the stormwater retention pond there. You can see the grass is already coming in. I don't know how, granted, it's been wet enough, but not warm enough. Here's a picture of what used to be the gully and now they've excavated it out. They've put in the riprap stone to slow the water down, to absorb the energy from the water, slow it down, and to reduce the amount of erosion there. So you can see there's a lot of landscaping that remains to be done on this site. The next project is the York High School project, behind York High School. It's along Cook Road. It's a stormwater retention project there. This is also another project being conducted by York County EDS. The project is approximately 21% complete as of December 31st and when you look at the slides here, you can see it looks like it's a lot further along than that. March 15th also remains the completion date for this project as well. This is the stormwater retention ponds behind York High. You can see they're very significant. It takes care of stormwater from the surrounding neighborhood as well as stormwater from York High School itself and that's why it's so large. There will be an earth berm between the retention pond and the York High School ball field. You see the lights there in the background, that is the lights around the ball fields there and in the far background there you can see York High School itself. So a lot of work has been going on here despite all the weather. Here's another angle, another view of the site. You can see the stormwater pond here in the foreground and again, the construction vehicles in the background there. The next project I'd like to touch on is the New Horizons Regional Education Center and this is a special education facility. This is being built at the Woodside Lane site. This is a joint project between the five school divisions and they have, despite the weather, they've also made some progress there. They've been installing the underground piping there and you can see that in this picture here, the white pipes sticking up out of the ground are the underground piping there at that site. So they are making progress. Now I'm going to shift gears a little bit here. Those are construction projects that have been taking place or underway and these are projects that will take place or are planning to take place next summer. The first of these is McGruder Elementary School. It's HVAC and partial roof replacement. Several aspects to that, we are replacing the original building HVAC system, HVAC equipment. This is in the original building. There's been two additions to the building. The air conditioning will not be replaced in those two additions. They're younger, they're newer. But the big thing that's coming up is the air conditioning for the gymnasium. The building's over 20 years old and has never had air conditioning in the gym. So that's a, the school's been anticipating this for a long, long time. As well, in this project also, we will be replacing the gymnasium roof and also enclosing the breezeway between the gymnasium and the main building. So it gives increased safety there at that building. If there are additional, if there are funds available, we will also be replacing the existing lighting with energy efficient LED lighting if there's funds available. So next and last project is Waller Mill Elementary School and there's So next and last project is Waller Mill Elementary School and there's additions and renovations of this site planned for the starting, starting this summer. You see that I have question marks there, summer two thousand fifteen to when. We don't know exactly what the timeframe is going to be on this site. The plan is, the plan is tentatively to build the additions first, move the children out of the existing building, at least one wing of it into the addition rooms, and then renovate that part of the building and then move, move around a little bit more and renovate the rest of the building. We don't know if that's exactly how we're going to do it yet. We're still working with the architect and trying to come up with an exact timeline for this building. There are ten classrooms being added to the building. Eight classrooms will be added as a classroom wing, somewhat similar to what we did at Seaford. And the gymnasium and two classrooms will be added onto the side of the building closest to the parking lot. The two classrooms in front of the gymnasium will be used for art and for music. While we're also at this building, we will, the contractor will be replacing windows, sinks, and the cabinets in existing classrooms. And we'll also be changing out the current heating and air conditioning systems, replacing those systems. Those are, have some significant age on them and are past end of useful life. Then the last part, the last phase of the project will be replacing the floor tiles throughout the existing building. So there's a lot of work going to be going on in the existing building as well as the new construction on this site. And that's my last slide for this evening. Do you have any questions for me?
Mr. Shearheart, I was wondering, at the Waller Mill Elementary School, the replacement of the existing floor tiles, do you think any of those might have asbestos in them?
Yes, sir. We believe some of it does and we have a study of exactly where those areas are.
Thank you.
Mr. Shearheart, I know this question gets asked sometimes by people when they see a large renovation construction project at one of our most, one of very old schools. Cost effectiveness versus, you know, raising the building and building from ground up or, you know, putting a new, a whole entire new building in versus doing renovations, coming and going in and, you know, of course adding a wing in this case, but also doing significant change to the building. Can you talk about that a little bit? Because we do a lot of renovation, not construction of new buildings.
So it's a lot more practical and cost effective to renovate an old building because you already have the infrastructure there. There are concerns and problems with an older building because you have, sometimes you take down a wall and you find something behind the wall you didn't expect, you know, pipes or things like, things like that. But overall, it's more cost effective for us to renovate an old building. And in some cases, it's more rapid to change out, to renovate an old building than it is to build a new one. One thing about building a new building, it kind of eliminates when you raise an old building and then build a new building on top of it, you've eliminated all the guesswork out of questions by building a new building. So there are pros and cons to both approaches, but we feel like the best, most cost effective approach is to renovate the building and add on to it where necessary.
And I ask that because of, it's taxpayer money or bonds that we go out and get borrowed to be able to do renovations or additions or completely new construction. And that gets asked sometimes and, you know, these older buildings are built quite well. But cosmetically, I know we do a lot to reface buildings and make them look newer and more appealing. So I look forward to seeing what the architects come up with with Waller Mill.
All right, you have a question?
All right, thank you. Now, we have one more item under presentations that's not listed. I'm sure y'all have figured out the presentation topic in the group because they're colorfully located in our audience and we all have hats that look just like theirs that we're going to put on. Mrs. Bauer, fourth grade, fantastic fourth grade teacher at Grafton Bethel Elementary School, leads this Read Across America team and effort every year. And she brings students, now she's actually got my neighbor dressed up, Casey there with the hat on. So, but she gets the older kids involved too. So I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Bauer and let her begin the program.
I don't, can Nate get up there?
Yes, they can. Let me get a picture, don't move quite yet, hold on. It looks different from up here. All right, everybody smile. There we go. All right.
Will that be okay?
Yeah, be fine.
So good evening and I'm so excited because this is one of my favorite times of the year. It's Read Across America time and I have some helpers here. I have Casey, Antonio, Brianna, Devin, Patrick, Lillian, Nate, and Addison here. And I'm hoping that everyone has the right hat on to can celebrate Read Across America. Do I have my friends here going to help us start?
Thank you.
For the places you'll go, there's fun to be done, there are points to be scored, and there are games to be won. The whimsical and zany prose of Dr. Seuss has been inspiration of the NEA's Read Across America celebration each spring. For the last fifteen years, York County schools have been celebrating Read Across America with reading fun, with the good doctor in mind. And this year will be no different.
Big A, little a, work begins with A. Our Annie's alligator, A-A-A. And Addison begins with A too. York County Schools gives an A plus for celebrating reading in our schools.
The Coast Guard, the Key Club, and Suzie's stud athletes, the famous, the young, and the older than me ladies. Parents, siblings, and the school board too are all part of the challenge. You'll see that is true. This year, the York Education Association and York County School Board challenges each school to have one hundred and ten volunteers read with students, or at the secondary level, have one hundred and ten students read with younger children during the month of February. The challenge culminates the first week of March at or around March second, the one hundred eleventh birthday of Dr. Seuss.
We also challenge everyone watching to read with a child because on March second, it is our goal is to have every child read in the company of a caring adult. You are never too old, too wacky, too wild to pick up a book and read with a child.
The more that you read, the more things you will know. The more that you learn, the more places you can go. We can do, you do, who across the world too. Maybe with a child. Ni, kon, un, na, nana? Ni yo.
Today is a great day. We are all off to great places and we're off in a way to celebrate reading in our own special way. York County has celebrated reading in many ways over the last fifteen years. Susan's characters have raised classrooms in reading. We have collected socks and pajamas, books and food. In precious years, we have used the senses to control our reading.
We have focused on famous Americans across the country and one year we invited our servicemen and women to come and read with our classes via Skype and in person. We have read biographies about the people who made America great and have contested contests to celebrate our diversity. We have worked for sneetches with stars upon stars and other years, York County has celebrated the wonderful and varied writers we have in America. We have donated gold rushes of books and a whole Whoville of volunteers have championed the cause each year. This year, in York County and across the nation, the focus is on the places you'll go and reading diverse books to get you there. We need diverse books because we are, we are a diverse people. So our diversity, your imagination, and read a book with a child.
Take a look at you please at all of my friends here, a story with them they want to share. I think it's quite clear that the Lorax and Horton, the Sneeche, and even Aunt Andy's alligator are helping the ears read and cheer. You have brains in your head, you have books in your shoes, you can steer yourself in any way that you choose. So pick up a book and travel to places. Wherever you read, you'll be the best of the best. Oh, the places you go, when you read with a child, you will top the rest.
Great job. Dr. George wants to borrow his blue hair.
I was just wondering, Ms. Smith, could each of you say your name, what grade you're in, and where you go to school?
Who's got the microphone? All right, start with.
I'm Antonio Calabrese. I am eighteen years old and I go to York High School.
I'm Brianna Brazil. I'm seventeen years old and I also go to York High School.
I'm Addison Lambey and I'm seven and I go to Grafton Bethel Elementary School.
My name is Naomi Lambey, I go to Grafton Bethel Elementary and I'm in fourth grade.
My name is Patrick Lamb. I'm eleven years old. I am in sixth grade in Grafton Middle School.
I'm Lily Lamb. I am fourth grade in Grafton Bethel Elementary School.
My name is Devon Wilder. I'm in eighth grade and I go to Grafton Middle School.
My name is Casey DeTress. I'm in twelfth grade and I go to York High School. Thank you.
And Mrs. Bauer, thank you again. Our next part of our meeting is comments by citizens. We have two items listed under this. One will be public participation at board meetings. The second is our public forum on the FY sixteen operating budget. We're going to go ahead and write into our comments by citizens. And Mary Pat Gallagher, when you come up to the podium, have three minutes as you can state your name and address for the record and the lights will tell you when your time is running short. So thank you.
Well, this is not a part of my presentation. I am keeping my hat on. Hi, good evening, Mr. Chairman, school board members, and Dr. Shandor. My name is Mary Pat Gallagher and I reside at two nineteen Silver Fox Trace, York County, Virginia, two two six nine three. The York School, York County School Division, mission, goals, and belief statements state that YCSV will recruit, hire, retain, and support a diverse staff that meets our highest standards. Question, how is it possible to meet our highest standards if YCSV pays teachers less than all the other neighboring schools and much less than schools, divisions in Northern Virginia? Pertaining to YCSV beliefs, excellence is characterized by a caring, involved, and dedicated school community. Question, how is this accomplished when many of our teachers have to work two or more jobs in order to make ends meet? Teachers are overwhelmed and stressed out. They feel overtasked with too many assessments, benchmarks, and more. Is achievement, achievements no more than performance on standardized tests? These evaluations and tasks take away from the teachers' time that they have to teach. When a student doesn't do well, the teachers are held accountable. Dr. George, as a professional who advises patients to brush and flush their teeth, should you be held accountable when they don't follow your instructions? Mr. Medford, if you have a prisoner in your jail who was released after serving his sentence, are you responsible when he commits a new crime? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Sam Ury.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the school board, Dr. Shandor. My name is Sam Ury. I'm from three oh two Penworth Crossing, York County, Virginia. It's time to change the education paradigm in the county and in the state. To do that, we must dramatically shift our focus away from keeping costs down and efficiency at all costs to what is best for our kids. Kids first. The way to do that is to eliminate the toxic testing, the data collecting nature of our schools, which is threatening our children, driving out teachers, and sounding the death knells of public education as we know it. In spite of all these things that I've said already, which are true, the true problem is the truly unconstitutional systemic disinvestment in the area of public education from the state. The public needs to know and understand that the state is not fulfilling its responsibility and causing localities anti-up more and more to compensate for diminishing state funds. If you look at two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen statewide, the total local government spent three point six billion dollar more than required for the state to match the standard of quality programs. It ranges from nine percent over to almost two hundred and twenty-four percent over. If you want to compare it to someplace like Fairfax, one hundred and twenty-three percent over, Loudoun, one hundred forty-seven percent over, Alexandria, one hundred seventy-three percent over, and I'll use that as an example. To illustrate this, I'd like to use some containers that will give you an excellent illustration. This is Alexandria. And Alexandria, if you put in the state and local balls, it comes out to about forty balls because I basically divided it out. So that gives you a visual there of Alexandria. Now, she's going to put in the additional balls that Alexandria puts in above what is required of local effort. At the same time, we're going to have on this end, York County. And York County has its forty balls. And then where the white balls are representative of the extra effort over here, we're just putting any kind of ball over here because I started running out of balls. And then we're going to put Nottaway here in the center. And you're going to see the dramatic difference between the local ability to pay and what they're paying. The required local effort is in yellow on both of them. The state part is in orange. And you can see that Alexandria doesn't get as much from the state, but they put in a lot of balls. Okay? This is York over here and Nottaway right here has its forty balls, but let me put in their local effort of balls. It was inevitable. Fair time. So you can see the discrepancy in the ability of locality to provide the quality of education. It is the state's job to kind of make sure this is more of a level playing field. We would love to have York County provide us more local effort, but we realize that it's, they're doing above what's required as it is right now. And we'd love to be, for them to be able to do more, but we need to keep the pressure on the state to give us more of an even playing field. Thank you for allowing me to provide this illustration.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we have no one else signed up to speak under citizens comment. There'll be time at the end of the meeting if anybody wishes to. At this time, I'm going to open our public forum on our FY sixteen operating budget. We have no one signed up to speak on the operating budget. Does anybody wish to address the board on FY sixteen operating budget? This time I'll close our public forum on FY sixteen operating budget, which moves us now to matters by board members. And Mr. Mentor, can we start with you?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Medford. Got a few items here. I just ran across it. Tab Middle School students visit York Convalescent. I thought that was really a growth program ahead here. As part of their transformative learning project, Lisa School Public Speaking Class at Tab Middle School researched what life was like for a teenager living in the forties and fifties. Based on their research with the TMS librarian, Nancy Diggs, students wrote a set of questions that they used to interview the residents of York Convalescence and Rehabilitation Center. After the field trip, the students presented their findings to their classmates. They also discussed their experiences taking, talking with the residents. The students shared with Mrs. School, Mrs. Diggs, and their classmates that the project was a personally fulfilling experience, which I thought was really great. I know that there was a gentleman when I was growing up, that was in his nineties and I was about thirteen and he used to come over and just want to talk to me. And I found it interesting, other kids thought it was crazy, but I liked listening to him. And I found it interesting. Other kids thought it was crazy, but I liked listening to him. There was also something that I ran across that, um, the York County School Division is taking part in the Greater Kindness Challenge. York County School Division, uh, School Division Elementary Schools are participating in the Greater Kindness Challenge, uh, the week of January twenty-sixth. The Greater Kindness Challenge is a proactive and positive fully prevention initiative that improves the school climate and increases students' engagement. Uh, the Great Kindness Challenge is one where we devoted to performing as many acts of kindness as possible, uh, using a, uh, provided checklist of fifty kinds of acts. Students, uh, take the challenge and prove that bullying and provide- prove that bullying is a weak and kindness in strength. Various activities such as, uh, Community Hero Tunnels are planned, uh, at each elementary school throughout the week. And, uh, so I think if it's additional information on that, Mrs. Goth, you have some stuff on that if anyone wants it. Also, there's, uh, an event coming up that I think's worth mentioning. It's called the Dark Side of the Internet Parent Seminar. And that's taking place at, uh, several locations. And it talks about the internet has grown exponentially around the world, and teenagers are the primary producers and users of the web and social media content. They share their ideas, thoughts, and pictures with others online. The unfortunate reality, however, is that the internet is also created in an environment in which private information can normally and normally end up in the wrong hands. And, uh, York County, uh, PTA is a big part of this too. So, uh, please check on that. And I think they have, uh, childcare available, but child- children are not to attend this. Uh, one other item I wanted to, uh, say, what a nice article Mrs. Edwood on your twenty-five years in- in the Wall Daily. And, uh, I reflect back looking at that and going, wow, you know, what's- what a twenty-five years. And I thank you for every one that I've shared with you. There's one other thing I ran across in some of my New Horizons material was called a twenty fifteen Military Child of the Year Award nominee. York High School, uh, student Christian Spurgeon, also a New Horizons Education Center career in tech welding student, has been nominated for the twenty fifteen Military Child of the Year Award. Operations Home Front presents the Military Child of the Year Award each year to the outstanding military children who demonstrate resiliency, leadership, and achievement. This award recognizes military children who provide themselves and accept- who prove themselves as exceptional citizens while facing the challenges of military family life. Uh, Christian was nominated by someone who believes he exhibits these fine qualities and deserves recognition. And his nominees for this award, uh, come from all over the world. Some nominees demonstrate leadership in their schools, sports teams, community clubs, and churches. Some children, uh, spearhead community action and thoughtful peer support campaigns. Others share their intellect- furios- intellectual curiosity and excel in academia. Any nominees have overcome great personal obstacles. Uh, what they all have in common is that they are part of exceptionally diverse military family community. And I thought that was very nice. Um, I take leave without just, uh, talking about this. February, and I think we have a proclamation coming up, is CTE month. Uh, February is CTA month, CTE month. And the theme for CTA, CTE month twenty fifteen is recognizing classroom innovators. CTE month is an annual celebration held in February of the CTE community members. Achievements and accomplishments nationwide. CTE month twenty fifteen will give the CTE community a chance to tell the stories of leadership and excellence from classrooms across the country and raise awareness of the critical role that CTA has in classrooms or modern-day laboratories. Our students and educators alike are developing the skills that will power the future of college and career success. For additional information, they give a website. Uh, what I found very interesting, uh, at the invitation of, uh, Senator Tim King, uh, he invited, uh, a Barretow County educator, Cap, as the, uh, guest for the Speaker of the Union, I mean, the, uh, State of the Union speech given this past week. And it says the Barretow County educator, uh, Lisa Barnett, uh, Barretow County Public Schools Coordinator for Career and Technical Education will be the guest of Senator Tim King, which this has already occurred. And, uh, I thought that was really neat. And I admire, uh, Senator King. He's always been very supportive of CTE and, uh, if you see him, please, in any communication, thank him for that. And that's all I have. And I won't say anything about the Martin Luther King Breakfast. Exceptional. I'll let that be all ahead. That's good.
Okay. Believe it or not, tomorrow starts the second semester of the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen school year. I hope, um, all of our students had, uh, successful outcomes on their midterms last week. I know we are all very happy that the, uh, weather didn't interrupt their testing like it did last year. Um, and I say that as we, uh, anticipate possible snow tonight, but at least the midterms are over. So let it snow. Uh, it's been a very It's been a very busy month as we've celebrated some of our outstanding students in the York County Schools. We've had the IB penning ceremony at York High School, the science fair that all of the students across the division participated in, and the NAACP XO awards on, um, Martin Luther King Day. And I want to congratulate all of our honorees and award winners. It's such a very impressive group of students in the IB program, the XO winners, and the science fair winners. Congratulations to all of you. Also, I had the opportunity to attend, um, some meetings with the York Foundation for Public Education, the Special Education Advisory Committee. And while I wasn't able to attend the gifted advisory committee, I want to thank Sarah Haywood and her team in- in the Extend Center for meeting with me last week. And I want to commend that group. What a remarkable group of teachers. Their enthusiasm is so contagious. Uh, I had a wonderful, wonderful meeting with them, wonderful time. And Dr. Lisa Penny Tuff, who has both of these groups under her, uh, guidance, I want to, uh, commend both teams in here for the exceptional work that they're doing. And that's it.
Thank you. Now, Haywood.
Thank you. Um, as- as Mrs. Presskin indicated, we have celebrated a lot of activities with students. A lot more activities to come with the plays in the schools, SOA performances and so forth that will fill up our calendar, but they are fun activities. Um, again, I join her in congratulating all of our students. And the one thing that I came away with is how do we recognize our students? And I talked to the- the chair about it. But there was a time that we would have receptions for our students so that we could publicly honor them. And that went to the wayside as we attempted to reduce our budget and, uh, try to balance a budget. And sometimes you have to step back and reevaluate where you- what you cut based on, uh, uh, the programs and the finances and so forth. So hopefully, we can do something before this school year is out, this semester is out, where we recognize our students because they have worked so hard for all that they've accomplished. And this is something that as we look forward to the future, um, what do we do? Because again, we are here to recognize our students, just like with the awards parts tonight. That's the fun time, which you celebrate with them. Uh, on Tuesday, we have a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors as we start our budget negotiations. I encourage the public to follow, to attend, to listen. On one account, York County has been known to be able to, uh, pay for public education. It is, uh, by the composite index, able to pay for education. All we indeed doing that is the county doing that. So please follow. You- you hear the teachers talk. Uh, and then again, we look back at the budgets over the years and what have we eliminated. And as we reevaluate that, what do we need to reinstate? So please follow the- the talks, um, that come, uh, attend those talks that- and see where we are faced with our budget, uh, status as we go into this budget year. And with that, uh, if the weather permits, we'll be in Richmond tomorrow. If the weather permits, we'll see.
Dr. George?
Well, this is the first time in eight years that every one of my talking points have been taken. So I don't have a lot to say, but I would like to follow up just with that. Oh, yeah. I would like to follow up just on the New Horizons speech page. I just, you know, I- I just can't say enough about New Horizons. And I- we get the newsletters and- and the things that you do over there and just the programs that they have. I don't know if everybody really realizes what- what programs they actually have. I thought I would just run down a quick list of- of things that we actually have to have to provide. Auto technology, maintenance, auto body repair, barbering, carpentry, construction trades, computer networking, cosmetology, criminal justice, law enforcement, culinary arts, dental assisting, electricity and renewable energy, early childhood education, electronics, robotics, fiber optics, EMT, heating, ventilation, firefighter, medical assistant, nursing assistant, pharmacy technician, veterinary science, and welding. That's quite a list. Uh, the program just serves, uh, a real- real need. And, uh, I just think, uh, kids are, uh, just very fortunate to, uh, to go to have that program here. And I just, uh, you know, my support goes for that, and I appreciate what you do for- for them over there, Paige.
Thank you, sir.
And just one more very important, uh, just give you a little perspective. We've completed eighty-nine days so far, and we have forty-seven school days left until spring break. So there you go. Give you something to look forward to.
Mr. Medford? Spring, yes. All of my items have been talked about except for one, and you don't even attend that one. I did, so that's why I can talk about it. Um, actually, I had a great opportunity, was invited, um, by the president of Thomas Nelson Community College to attend a roundtable with him and some other people in the community. Um, Chip Rogers came along with me from the School Division. And, um, John Dever is his name. And he, um, and Belinda Willis, one of the board members of Thomas Nelson Community College, was, um, put this event on. And it was about twelve, thirteen of us in the room. But some of the things I walked away with was they're gonna initiate a career coach in our School Division that will service all four of our high schools. Uh, many of the school districts, um, around us already have a career coach. But this person will be able to be utilized to help students navigate, um, if they're not quite, you know, there or thinking about a career path. But when he presented about everything, the community college, I mean, it set me back not knowing as much as I wish I would've known walking in there. But walking out, I knew so much more about what community colleges, um, and those institutions offer our students. And anywhere along the, you know, path our students can choose, um, where they can start right there at the community college. Had a fact, I looked at Mr., um, just Chip Rogers on, and I said, "We need to have this president come before us as a school board and do a presentation on community colleges." Or if that didn't work out, to do some staff development, have their staff come in and do staff development with our secondary, um, couns- counselors in our- at our secondary high school so that our counselors know everything that these community colleges offer so they can help students navigate. But I think the career coach is gonna be pretty awesome. I know our superintendent has had some correspondence and connections with the, um, president there, which y'all are still trying to connect one-on-one, but I think that that's a positive because of what they offer. So I just wanted to share that. Um, and everyone received this. If you ever get an opportunity to go to the Wollomel Fine Arts Magnet, um, Dinner Theater, oh my goodness. All right, invitation's out. It's February nineteenth and twentieth. Um, and then also again on the twenty-first. So everyone's got the invitation, but this one is a Broadway lullaby. So, I mean, just an awesome event, so, and dinner's not bad. And with that, I'll conclude matters by board members. Financial matters, Mr. Mentor.
Thank you, Mr. Medford. This time, I'd like to move into a certificate for approval of claims for the month of December. There were eighty-four claims that were, uh, posted. And the total cost of those claims was two million, seven hundred, seven thousand, six hundred, fifty-eight dollars and twenty-one cents. So I can bring your attention to, uh, significant expenditures, uh, for the month of December. Uh, the very first one on that particular page, uh, for fifty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars, uh, this, uh, higher learning. And this was just some foreign language textbooks in secondary schools in, uh, Spanish, French, and German. Uh, so this is something we needed for some time, and I'm glad to see this in. Uh, about just number three and four down the line is called Homlich, uh, and Reading Intervention. Uh, there are two expenditures for that. Uh, one of them was twenty-three thousand, seven hundred, fifty-four dollars, and the other was fourteen thousand, seven hundred, ninety-five dollars and ninety-six cents. This is the elementary literacy program. It's a local initiative, and it gets a federal grant, so that helps a lot. Uh, moving down the page, uh, about almost halfway, you'll see an expenditure for ten thousand, uh, six hundred, thirty-five dollars and eighty-four cents. That's, uh, for CWD, uh, government computer replacements for the, uh, library checkout stations at all our schools. So I'm glad to see that being updated. Next expenditure below it was forty-five thousand, nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. It was, uh, AMPET, uh, company for three D printers, two- for two of them. Uh, one each for York High School and, uh, Grafton High School. And that was funded by, uh, Paul, uh, Carl Perkins Grant. I don't know if you've ever had an opportunity to see those printers work, but it's just fascinating because they put information in. It melts the plastic and actually makes the parts. So if you get a chance to get in to see that, it's fantastic. Uh, moving about, uh, three quarters of the way down the page, uh, there are, uh, three expenditures that were given to Bay Electric, which totaled sixty-three thousand, four hundred and four dollars. And, uh, these, first expenditure for York High School, exterior lighting retrofit. They're going to LED, and also at York Middle School and York High School. So that lighting is very important. It's a great upgrade. And so I'm glad to see that. Uh, moving a little further down, you'll see, uh, Hudson and Associates. That was an expenditure of eleven thousand, uh, fifty dollars and eleven cents. That's the Grafton Complex, uh, window and roof repair A and E. So that building's twenty years old there, and there's some things starting to happen. And I'm glad to see that repair, uh, taking place. It's kinda been an ongoing thing. And the last item on that page, thirty-one thousand, seven hundred, sixty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. Uh, Hudson and Associates. And that is, uh, Mount Vernon Elementary, uh, HVAC and partial, uh, roof replacement, which I think will show up a little bit later. The, um, now moving into the York County School Division FY fifteen operating budget, uh, the monthly financial report, uh, for December. If you look at what's been received, uh, to this point, uh, we've received ninety-one million, two hundred, forty-three thousand, three hundred, fifty-seven dollars and sixty-seven cents, which is sixty-nine percent of our budget. And that is ahead of where we were in twenty thirteen when we received ninety thousand, nine hundred, fifty-five dollars, uh, ninety million, nine hundred, fifty-five thousand, five hundred, forty-eight dollars and ninety-two cents. Uh, you're looking at our expenditures. Uh, you can see that our expenditures have totaled, at this point, uh, forty-six million, two hundred, fifty-five thousand, thirty-seven dollars and fifty-six cents, which is, uh, forty-one percent. I can bring your attention to the, um, York County School Division FY fifteen Food Service Monthly Financial Report. Uh, you'll take a look at the column, uh, Funds Received Today, one million, two hundred, thirteen, thirteen thousand, five hundred, seventy-one dollars and forty-eight cents. And you can see that back in FY fourteen, at that same particular time, we'd only received one million, uh, one hundred, ninety thousand, one hundred, forty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. So we're a little ahead there. That's good. Uh, also, if you look down at our expenditures, uh, to this point, we've had expenditures of one million, one hundred, fifteen thousand, three hundred, fifty-two dollars and eight cents. This time, if I can move your attention to Resolution Number Fifteen dash oh five. Uh, these, uh, items were the division superintendent has deemed desirable and necessary and exceed the value of fifty thousand dollars, and the board must approve those. Uh, the first item on that list, Requisition Five Zero Three Three Zero, uh, tuition for special education at, uh, the Grafton School Incorporated. And- And the next one is Fifty Three Three Five, which is Tuition for Special Education, which goes into the Rivers Bend Academy. Now, both of these are related to the Comprehensive Service Act. Third item down, I'd like to talk about the, there's an HVAC system, which would be for the entire building, and a roof replacement, which would be on the gym side at Mount Vernon Elementary School. And both of these items are almost twenty-five years old, if not twenty-five years old, so they've helped up well. The last two items I'd like to talk about, Item Five Zero Three Five Six, Painting, Lighting, Restroom Restoration at Grafton Bethel Elementary School, which was hitting a total cost of four hundred, sixty-five thousand dollars, and that's an estimate. And the one on the bottom, I think is extremely important, is the window and roof repairs that will go on at Grafton Middle School and Grafton High School, and that's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars is the estimate on that. And with that, submit the financial report for approval.
Need a second?
Second.
Any comments, questions? Mrs. Ford?
A motion made by Mr. Mentor and seconded by Mrs. Kersky to approve financial matters. Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
And Mr. Metford?
Yes, thank you. Consent calendar has three items under it. Does anybody wish to pull anything or remove anything from consent? All right, I'll move consent. I need a second.
Second.
Any questions? Mrs. Ford?
A motion made by Mr. Metford and seconded by Mrs. Haywood to approve the consent calendar. Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
And Mr. Metford?
Yes, thank you. Under Action, we have five items, and all significant items, so we place them under Action. And the first one, they're proclamations, so, Dr. Shandor, the first one is for our principals.
Thank you, Mr. Metford. The Governor has designated this week, January twenty-fifth through the thirty-first, as Principal Appreciation Week in Virginia. I'd like to share a few highlights from the proclamation. In YCSD, we are fortunate to have nineteen dedicated individuals who work tirelessly to promote the joy of teaching and learning, and maintain academic accountability while ensuring students are in a safe learning environment. Through their diligent work and enthusiasm, our principals provide educational leadership, which helps maintain the standards of excellence expected in York County, which we all appreciate.
All right, thank you. Can I have a motion to approve Action I may?
Move motion.
Second.
Second, thank you. Mrs. Ford?
A motion made by Dr. George and seconded by Mrs. Kersky to approve the proclamation for Principal's Appreciation Week. Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Mr. Metford?
Yes, thank you. Our next proclamation is reference to National School Counseling Week. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Mr. Metford. February second through the sixth is National School Counseling Week. As such, we have a proclamation recognizing their commitment to helping students explore their strengths, interests, and talents, as these traits relate to career awareness and development. Our counselors work extremely close with their fellow educators and parents and utilize community resources, which help our students become successful and productive citizens. We are all thankful for our counselors.
Thank you. Need a motion to approve? So move.
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Ford?
A motion made by Mr. Mentor and seconded by Mrs. Haywood to approve the proclamation for National School Counseling Week. Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
Mr. Metford?
Yes, thank you. Our next proclamation is near and dear to Mr. Mentor's heart and all of ours, and that's our Career Technical Education Month. Dr. Shandor?
February is a big month. February is also Career Technical Education Month. York County recognizes the importance of the skills and knowledge that career and technical education offers our students. Career and technical education gives high school students experience in practical, meaningful applications of basic skills such as reading, writing, and mathematics, thus improving the quality of their education. We appreciate the work of our career and technical education teachers, as well as those at New Horizons.
All right, thank you. Need a motion to approve? So move.
Second.
Mrs. Ford?
A motion made by Mr. Mentor and seconded by Dr. George to approve the proclamation for Career and Technical Education Month. Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And we had our Read Across America presentation this evening earlier. Now, there's a proclamation declaring that day, so, Dr. Shandor?
As Ms. Bauer and her team shared earlier this evening, March second is Read Across America Day in celebration of Dr. Seuss's birthday. This event promotes reading and adult involvement in the education of all students in YCSD. I can tell you, I'm looking forward to participating in the activities that are planned in our school division.
Need a motion to approve?
A motion to approve of consideration of approval of proclamation for Read Across America Day.
All right, need a second?
Second.
All right, Mrs. Haywood has it. Mrs. Ford?
A motion is made by Mrs. Kersky and seconded by Mrs. Haywood to approve the proclamation for Read Across America Day. Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Mr. Metford?
Yes, thank you. Our next item is a consideration of approval of our Virginia School Board Association's Code of Conduct for the school board members. This is something we look at annually, we're reminded of it many times in our professional development, but Mrs. Haywood, I'll turn to you for this one.
Yes, the Virginia School Board Association Code of Conduct. Over the years, through Virginia School Boards Association, we endorse, support a code of conduct, or a standard or rule of which we conduct our business. And a little bit about this, as a member of my local school board, I will strive to be an advocate for students and to improve public education, and to that end, there are a number of things that we will do. The first one is, I will have integrity in all matters and support the full development of all children and the welfare of the community, Commonwealth, and the nation. There are a number of things that we will do as a part of that. And then the last one, I will always remember that the foremost concern of the board, and I'm going to reiterate that again, I will always remember that the foremost concern of the board is to improve and enhance the teaching and learning experience for all students in the public schools of Virginia. Therefore, I will always strive to demonstrate appropriate behavior and conduct as a public school board member, and that's something we support and sign each year, and we have all, in fact, the five of us have signed it tonight. And with that, I would like to move approval of this code of conduct.
Thank you. Need a second, Mrs. Kersky. Mrs. Ford?
Mrs. Haywood made a motion, and Mrs. Kersky seconded it, to approve the code of conduct for school board members. Dr. George?
Yes.
Mrs. Haywood?
Yes.
Mrs. Kersky?
Yes.
Mr. Mentor?
Yes.
And Mr. Metford?
Yes, thank you. We have nothing under policy, discussion first reading or second reading, so we'll go right to the floor of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Metford. I have a few items I would just wanted to brief the board on tonight. First, I want to share some information with our community and our teachers and staff who are viewing at home. I have to tell you, I attended the intruder drills, the unannounced intruder drills, at Grafton Complex with our middle and high school, and then a few days later, went to Dare Elementary. And I can't tell you how impressed I am with the coordination of this event, so Lieutenant Han, your folks and all of our agencies who collaborate and work together should be certainly commended for that work. Really impressed with the detail and the formal debrief at the end with the principals and administrators in the room. I was really impressed with that. So I can tell you, as a future parent, when my family gets here, we're very fortunate to have the coordination to look over the safety of our schools. So thank you so much for that, Lieutenant Han. Couple other items. This past week, I had the opportunity to attend the parent educator training that our parent educators receive, and I can tell you that we have some really dedicated people there. And I was really impressed with their level of involvement in the training, and I just really appreciate this group, and I know that the board does as well, and I think it's a group that doesn't get the recognition sometimes that they all deserve, but those folks work extremely hard with our students. And then this afternoon, Ms. Goff and I had the opportunity to spend the afternoon with a hundred and seventy-five bus drivers, and we had a wonderful, wonderful session with them. They were in professional development sessions as well with Mr. Lash and his team, and I can tell you, I received some wonderful feedback from that group, and I found them to be engaged in the conversation, and they were all so proud to work for YCSD, and that was really impressive. And I certainly appreciate that time that I spent with them, and I think that's another group that doesn't get the recognition that they deserve. They are the director of first impressions. When that bus door opens, for students to get, to put their foot on that first step, they can set the tone for those kids, so I'm really impressed with that group. Just a few other items. February is School Board Appreciation Month, so I want all of our staff and community to make sure that they take time to recognize our school board. It's important that you all receive the recognition for your accomplishments and the work that you do every day. I can tell you, as a new superintendent, on my forty-sixth day on the job, I'll stop counting days when I get to a hundred. I appreciate your support and your honest feedback, and I appreciate you to be in your advocacy for our school, so I'm looking forward to the month of February, and I know our team is looking forward to recognizing you as well. Ms. Kersky, I think touched on the Science Fair. Again, I was impressed with the level of those projects, and I thought that was a really well-delivered event from our curriculum folks. I think they did a wonderful job, and I think our M.C. for the evening did a wonderful job as well. And then finally, again, second semester, halftime's over, so now it's time to get back in the game, and second semester begins tomorrow. Our staff participated in a lot of high-quality professional development today, was really impressed with that. I got to get to a few schools and see what our teachers were working on, was really impressed with that. So I'm sure our students are rested, and I'm very hopeful that we're going to have school tomorrow, Dr. Jan. So really ready to get the students back in school and get rolling with second semester, so that was all I had.
All right, thank you. Anyone wishing to address the board this evening that hasn't done so already? Anybody wishing to, any comments before we close? All right.
Soowa has a production that starts Thursday night, Legally Blonde, up at Breton High School. I think it's going to be a wonderful show, Thursday, Friday night, Saturday, a matinee, and then Saturday night as well. So I would encourage anyone who wants to see a great show to head up to Breton and see the Soowa kids in action.
Yeah, they're wonderful. All right, with that, everyone have a safe evening, with weather tomorrow not knowing what it's going to be. We're adjourned.